Good evening, Miss Allen. You would open us for questions.
Thank you. Father, when I woke up this morning, in the words of the Psalms, I look up at heaven and I've said, "Thank you, Jesus. You have been good to me." You have truly been good to all of us in this room this evening. You have been a roof on our heads. You have been our water in dry places. You have been our food in a starving land. We ask this evening that you come in and abide with us. Help us, Lord, to guide what we say. Help us, Lord, to do everything that we do in order. Help us, Father, this evening not to get weary in doing what is good and just in your sight. We ask that either to put an arm of protection and a wall of protection around all the children and their families here in Kershaw County. Help us, Lord, to continue to do what our mission is to educate all the children here in this county. And we will give you all the honor and glory that is due you. And in the master's name of Jesus Christ, we say amen this evening, and thank you, Lord, and we count it all to you. Amen.
Oh, the Kershaw County Councilwoman who has made this meeting into order. There's a motion to adopt the proposed agenda.
Absolutely.
Part of the motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Surratt. In discussion here, none on the fair, let me know if I say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, there can end this. There's a motion to adopt it, consent agenda approved in minutes for the eighteenth board meeting. I told the twenty-three finance and facility and one facility.
The next.
Part of the motion by Mr. Blackman, second by Mr. Ira. In discussion here, none on the most favorable, you know, if I say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Yes.
And one abstention. We have two. Thank you. We want to thank each and every one together to give this evening. We thank, we're grateful for the Chronicle in its help and the Pendleton Whistle. As well as WPUB, Judge Johnson, thank you all for being here for this evening. And we also thank the community for being here. That moves us down to our public forum. We have two. Signed up, we have Brittany Robinson, bus driver shortage. If you connect this time, I will read our gammas, we're both in the room, we'll be speaking. Public forum, there's an opportunity for the public share information with the board. There's not a time for debate, especially upon the board. There's a time for the board to receive input. There's not a time for the board to respond, to respond. Public forum is a time to discuss. There's a time to discuss issues, not individuals. Other avenues exist for individual personnel complaints. Public forum is meant to a total of ten minutes. Each speaker will have a total of five minutes to address the board. Thank you, Miss.
All right. Thank you for your time. I'm here on behalf of some North Central parents, as well as myself, to talk about the bus driver shortage in North Central particularly, although I do know it is countywide. A parent reached out to me and told me that their student was on the bus for over three hours the other day. And my student who's in middle school, there were several days my students did not get picked up. And when I called the bus office, it took three days to get a response. And I know that it's because the supervisor was on the bus, which to me as a parent was very frustrating because supervisors should be in the, on the office doing supervisor duties. And I realized that there's, the bus driver shortage is, they've lost more than half in the North Central office. So I do realize that it's not really a problem, but more of a crisis. And I think that there's three reasons why this is happening. Is pay. I think we should pay our drivers more. And the leadership in the North Central Bus Office needs to be better. When you, when you call the bus office, you should get a response. You should know where your child is, and if your child is going to be three hours on a bus, parents should know that. If a parent like myself or my child didn't have a bus driver that day, I should have been known. Or I should have been called. There's no communication at all. There's no phone bank or anything. So what I would ask is to look into the situation, the supervisor situation. Because I do believe we do need better leadership at the North Central Bus Office, and parents need to be communicated with. And I appreciate your time, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Next, we have Sherri Few, U.S. Pod, representing U.S. Pod CRT topic.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Goodwin. My name is Sherri Few, and I'm the president of United States Parents Involved in Education. I'm here to share evidence we have that training implemented in this school district's last year titled culturally relevant pedagogy is the same as critical race theory. We warned you in the summer of 2021 that critical race theory is being implemented in the district. But you turned a blind eye and put blind trust in your leadership. Former superintendent Dr. Robbins spoke to the local Republican Party that summer with the purpose of ensuring the public that critical race theory is not being taught in Kershaw County. He admitted, however, that they were implementing something called culturally relevant pedagogy. During the Q and A portion of his presentation, I told him that I understood that culturally relevant pedagogy is the same as critical race theory. He told me and the audience that I was wrong. So I asked him to provide the training materials so I could judge for myself. He agreed to do so and told me to email his assistant for the materials. I emailed and they responded, "I would have to FOIA the materials." I FOIAed, but the district refused to provide the training slides, saying they were proprietary and they were unable to release them. I then filed a lawsuit against the district for violating the law concerning public records requests. During the hearing, the district's counsel claimed they did not have the slides in their possession. And they had tried to call and email the trainer to see about providing the slides to me, and they claimed she was non-responsive. It seems odd that their initial response was they could not release them, suggesting they did have possession. But when faced with a lawsuit, they don't have them in their possession. Last week, a group of conservative members of the South Carolina General Assembly, who call themselves the South Carolina Freedom Caucus, released a video of a conversation recorded with a woman who admits to training South Carolina teachers in culturally relevant pedagogy. She admits in the video that culturally relevant pedagogy is akin to critical race theory. She warns not to use the term critical race theory. She admits that it goes against mainstream teaching, and there will be pushback. She starts her training by asking participants what privileges they enjoy and what parts of their identity are privileged. She admits that as soon as people hear this, they are really turned off. She calls critical race theory a normal social construct. She talks about counter narratives and gave an example of a white student reading the U.S. Constitution, and then a black student would read a counter narrative. She says that for every law, there is a counter narrative, and people will want to hear that. This video proves what I've been saying all along. Culturally relevant pedagogy is critical race theory. And even worse, because it incorporates several Marxist critical theories, including critical race theory, critical feminist theory, critical queer theory, and critical gender theory. This is all evidenced in a book authored by the professor who trained the staff of this district. According to information I gave through FOIA, this book is also listed as the primary textbook for the African American Studies Force that was created by this district in response to the death of George Floyd. This force is also very concerning. I have reviewed the syllabus, and it is all about social justice and includes very questionable reading materials. If you would like more information for the evidence I reflected, I will be glad to provide it to you. But in the meantime, I am so happy that we have two strong school board candidates who will likely be elected Tuesday and who are committed to fighting this. If you continue to deny this is happening or support these Marxist theories being spoon-fed to the district students, I will personally work hard with other members of the community to be sure you are replaced. It is shameful for a school district to refuse to be transparent about how teachers are being trained to teach the children of our community. It is a travesty when the only way to get the districts to comply with the law is for a taxpayer payer to use their personal money to hire an attorney and file suit. Moreover, the level of deceit on the part of the school district is shocking. I will be praying for God to remove the scales from your eyes and ears for you to hear what the Spirit of the Lord is saying. God will never support divisive theories that harm innocent children and lead them away from his precepts. It is my calling to protect children and our country's freedom, and that is why I spent the last two years as executive producer of the film Truth in Lives in American Education, which can be viewed at truthinlivesfilm.us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I want to know what agenda is. All the new state.
Yes, and while Mr. Matthews and then Mr. Carr come up, just want to make a couple of interject remarks. As we said at the last board meeting, the state federal report cards had just been issued, and we were under the part of them sort of the day before our meeting. But tonight, we will go through a pretty in-depth review of data that we're looking at. One of the things that we have up on the board for our goals to be a top five, top ten student in the state. And what we want to do is to make sure that you see the, where we have work still to do to make that. And we do have work still before us. And then also to make sure that you see that, you know, the things that we were talking about last meeting, how stark the issue is between ELA and math. And it's not in Kershaw County. It's nationwide is where the mathematics gap is. And we certainly have already begun work on addressing that gap. And so as we go through, I think that you'll, you'll see very clearly that that gap is there. And as you see the state numbers, you'll also see that the gap is state. And like, now I say likewise, but so at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Boyd Carter and Mr. Danny Matthews.
Right, thank you. Carrie, you can advance the slide to the profile of the South Carolina graduate. The express goal of the accountability system is to improve teaching and learning so that all students are equipped with a strong academic foundation to ensure that graduates end up with world-class knowledge, skill, and characteristics defined by the profile of the South Carolina graduate. Next slide. These are the report card indicators for elementary, middle, and high school on the report cards. There are five indicators for elementary and middle schools and six indicators for the high schools. Most of the indicators are the same. There are a few notable differences. High school report cards include graduation rate and college and career readiness indications. While elementary and middle school report cards have an indicator for student progress. You see that the English learners' progress indicator for all schools can be made up of ten points or no points. As with the schools with fewer than twenty students who are eligible to be included in this metric, don't receive a rating for this indicator, and the points are spread across other indicators so that the total possible number of points a school can earn is a hundred points. Next slide. The academic achievement indicator for elementary and middle schools is for SC ready and SC alt assessments for ELA and mathematics. And for high school, this indicator is for end of course assessments in English one and algebra one and SC alt ELA and mathematics. Next slide. The preparing for success indicator for elementary and middle schools measured performance on SC pass and SC alt assessments for science in grades four and six. And for high schools, this indicator measures end of course assessments in biology one and SC alt science. Next slide. The English learners' progress indicator for all schools measures the progress of English learners for proficiency in English. Keep in mind, this is the one where schools with fewer than twenty students who are eligible to be included in this metric do not receive a rating for this indicator. Next slide. S requires at least one indicator of school quality or student success. And South Carolina uses teacher and students' perception of school climate as measured by the school climate surveys developed through the Education Accountability Act of 1998, which have been given annually since their development. And those capture again teachers and students' perceptions of the school's climate and quality. Next slide. Only elementary and middle schools have a student progress indicator, and this indicator measures the growth index of paying for ELA, mathematics, and academic progress. Two factors. One is all students in the school, and the second is the lowest performing twenty percent of students. And high schools, they're different when this is not included. The elementary middle is of course graduation rate, which is the on-time four-year graduation rate. Next slide. The high school college and career readiness indicator measures the proportion of students in a high school's graduation cohort who are college or career ready, and it uses various measures for this indicator. For college readiness, you're looking at a greater than equal to twenty on an ACT composite score, a greater than equal to ten twenty on an SAT composite, greater than equal to. a greater than equal to ten twenty on an SAT composite, greater than equal to three on an AP exam, and more than six hours of dual credit at a C or higher. And for career readiness, a CTE completer earning an industry credential greater than or equal to solo credential on work P's or ready-to-work assessment, greater than thirty-one on the ASVAT test, a successful work-based learning exit evaluation, and more than one unit and pathway related to work-based placement. And student with disabilities successfully completes the South Carolina High School Employability Credential is another measure of provenance. Next slide. These next indicators are reported, but they're not rated on the school report cards. And this first indicator is for classroom environment. And that indicator is the data collected about teachers and classrooms in the district. Next slide. And the next one is the Student Safety, which is for elementary, middle, and high schools. And that's based on the data submitted by the district for the current school year in the incident management system. Next slide. Financial data element that is reported but not rated just deals with school-level financial information like per pupil expenditures, percentage of expenditures for instruction, and percentage of total expenditures for teacher salaries. And next slide shows us the two thousand and twenty-two overall school report card ratings. For elementary schools, we had one good rating, three average, and five below average. For middle schools, we had two good and two average. And for high schools, we had one good and two average. Right, with that, if you have no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matthews. Any questions about your report card before we leave it off?
Okie dokie. When I when I was a young boy, before somebody else was born, and especially somebody else in the audience, in school, we would have a slot, a film strip projector, and there was always a little sound that meant turn the page in your little book that you were following, it was a beep. So Carrie, beep. All right. This slide talks of is a composite of our SC Ready score since two thousand and fifteen. We wanted to go back to two thousand and fifteen because two thousand and fifteen was the last year under a certain set of standards, the ACT ASPIRE standards. Starting in two thousand and sixteen, we started the South Carolina College and Career Ready Standards. So it was a shift in standards from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen through now. And the standards are undergoing another change right now. Social studies standards have been adopted and they will be tested this year. Biology and science standards are undergoing that process now. The next group of these English standards, those will be adopted at the middle of this year and they will be tested in two thousand and four, two thousand and five for results. What you can see here, starting in two thousand and sixteen, a shift in the scores from the ACT ASPIRE to the College and Career Ready Standard. And you can follow that through, if you follow a specific color band. I'll pick yellow because it's it's on the longest diagonal. You can actually follow a cohort of students. So in two thousand and fifteen, the third graders were under the ACT ASPIRE standards. And then in two thousand and sixteen, in fourth grade, twenty seventeen, in fifth grade, so you can follow it down and you can actually track that cohort of kids. If you look at the standards vertically, you see the just not apples to apples, but apples to oranges. You see what the third grade progression has been as we got adjusted to those standards. Okay, beep. When you look at the the math standards, you can see the same thing. We have a star by the two thousand and seventeen Algebra One scores because the state at that point re-centered the test. They went along and they saw that the scores were too high, so they went in and changed the test on everybody and so the test scores dropped and you see that we are readjusting. Dr. Goodwin brought up a really good comment. In our last meeting, you see that in COVID two thousand and twenty, we didn't test. In two thousand and twenty-one, although we tested, those scores didn't count to an accountability. So the Algebra One scores in two thousand and nineteen, that's seventy-five point nine in two thousand and nineteen, is what's reported on this year's school report card. Okay, so that's what they they track, the cohort of kids, the two thousand and nineteen kids graduated in two thousand and twenty-two. So that's the the where that specific score is used in the accountability system. No one to this point has told us what they're going to do for the accountability for the two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one scores because they, in two thousand and twenty, we didn't test at all. So as far as measuring student progress, that's that's going to be a question that no one seems to know at this point. So those scores track Kershaw County alone. Okay, beep. Looking at the next few slides, we're going to compare how Kershaw County does to our contiguous neighbors. These are all the counties that touch us and all of the the districts in Lexington County. The green bar you see will be Kershaw County. The dark blue bar is the state average and the light blue bar bars are everybody else. So you can see that's the third grade ELA. The fourth grade, the third grade math. So you can see the third grade math in the third grade ELA, we are close to the state average, but below. But on the high side of the median value, the median being the number in the middle. The fourth grade ELA scores, again, we are right by the state average, better than most, but not as good as some of the others. This is the math in fourth grade. You see, I hope you'll continue to see that the scores statewide are not where we would have them to be and in some cases are very aligning. Go ahead, Carrie. Here in fifth grade ELA, we are greater than the state average. But remember also that in in ELA, we have double the time. Generally, most elementary schools spend a hundred and twenty minutes on ELA and sixty minutes on math. And we've been doing that for many years. So the scores in ELA have outpaced math. Also, when we went on COVID, most people read as a matter of their daily life. Unfortunately, unless you live in my house and you're my child, you probably don't do math as part of your daily life. You know, I I happen to enjoy that, I'm a little weird that way. But a lot of people, when they went out on COVID, that was not something that they they spent a lot of time on. Go ahead, Carrie. This is fifth grade math, again, right at the state average, a little, again, not where we want to be, but considering those around us, we're we're in the game. Go ahead, Carrie. Sixth grade ELA. Sixth grade math. Seventh grade ELA. Go back for a second, Carrie, and you'll see that those scores have gotten progressively in the ELA. They've gotten progressively better from the third grade up to seventh grade. And the seventh grade is above the state average, only outpaced by Lexington one and Lexington five. Go ahead, Carrie. Fifth grade, seventh grade math. Seventh grade ELA is the one place on this year's report card that we are within the top ten districts in the state. So our kudos to our eighth grade ELA teachers for that. And one more here. And then eighth grade math. Next, we'll look at the EOC scores. The EOC scores you've seen so far on the the multi-colored chart you saw earlier were all English One scores except for the last two numbers. They changed to English Two two years ago, so they they changed the test that they're using for accountability. They moved away from English One on to English Two. So you can see our English Two scores are are good, above the state average by about four percent. And again, outpaced by Lexington one and Lexington two. Go ahead, Carrie. Our Algebra One scores, the other thing I'd like you to notice is these are Bs, As, Bs, and Cs, not As, Bs, Cs, and Ds. Okay, before they would, they would, the the question was whether or not they'd pass. They've changed that dynamic and now it's Cs are better. So and that mimics what goes on with the SC Ready scores, which measures meets and exceeds, not approaching. So here, our Algebra One EOCs are again better than state, only outpaced by Lexington five. Go ahead, Carrie. Our U.S. History scores, again, better than the state average, only outpaced by Lexington five. I would like to throw this out that as since they were adjusting the U.S. History standard, they said, the state said early, this test was not used as a part of your twenty percent of your yearly grade since the standards had changed. So we held kids harmless. If the score helped their average, we let it count. If the score did not help their average, then we did not, as opposed, the state gave us that flexibility. As you can imagine, when somebody, especially high school students finds that something doesn't necessarily count, they don't necessarily give it their best of ever. Next one, Carrie. Our Biology EOC, this standard is changing as well. They will field test that this year and then it will be live the next. Carrie, and these are our graduation rates. Our graduation rate for the first time brought below the state average at eighty-three point three. Point four behind this, excuse me, point five behind the state average. Cannon's House, Cannon High Schools was eighty point six, you know, that's a drop of five point nine percent. Ludoff was at eighty-four point three, that's a drop of one point three percent. And North Central's was eighty-five point zero, a drop of four point seven percent. I'd like you to look at some of the names and the locations on the grad rate here and remember the placement in the in the location. Okay, these are people that graduated, you know, four years, this is a four-year grad rate. And now, let's move the slide here. This is our college and career readiness of the people you just saw. And and Mr. Carter just talked to you about what it means to be college or career ready. The state has a certain dynamic that they want you to to follow to be classified college and career ready. So your diploma means something. Okay, it means that you can leave here and you're ready for the workforce. You can leave here and you're ready for a four-year doctor. Some of the districts who are very high on grad rate aren't as high on college and career. Some of the districts who are lower in college and career in grad rate are higher in college and career ready. Leading one to recognize the rigor of what's going on in the class. So we were pleased about our college and career ready number. They're not in the top ten, but that is certainly our goal. Advance this slide, Carrie. Next one. You have in your in in your presentation, a link to the top ten standardized test score districts. I'm not going to go through all of them. Go ahead and click on one of them. Just click on the link here. And we won't listen to music here. There, okay. As as Carrie scrolls through this, and this this goes on, this goes third grade ELA, third grade math, fourth grade ELA, fourth grade math, just like we just got through doing, but it lists the top ten school district. What you'll notice is you see some of the same names over and over and over. Anderson One, Anderson Four, Anderson Three, Anderson Two, Greenville, Spartanburg, Charleston. So you see some of the same districts. You also see some districts that surprise you. Addyville. Lancaster. Districts who are like us, who we need to go see. And we need, we need to pick their brains as as they need to pick ours as well. So you'll see our score and the state score and the top district. We need to keep that in front of us. If this is the stick that we're going to be judged by, that's a board goal, that's what we're going to aim for. Then we need to know who who our competition is and what we can do to match what they do. Okay, thank you, Carrie. Lastly, I want to talk about, and you've seen some of this, so I just want to reiterate what we said at the last meeting. Some of our goals, some of our next steps. We do have, as Dr. Goodwin has said, we have district goals of being top five in graduation rate, in college and career readiness. Given Dr. Goodman back today, protocol to give to our high schools that we're going to do a better job of monitoring that. We're going to hold some principals accountable for what's going on in the school and for keeping that information current. We have district goals of being top ten in state and SC Ready and currently our eighth grade ELA met that goal. We have increased our focus on our instructional goals and non-negotiables with staff. We focus on student attendance. I think I said at the last meeting that our chronic absentee rate as a district was twenty percent. That means twenty percent of our students, for one reason or another, missed eighteen or more days. Now, that's for any reason. That's if you were sick, if you were quarantined, if you have a pair of notes of excused absences count in that. You're only allowed a certain number of excused absence. So we have students, and twenty percent, that ended up being about thirty-seven thousand days that students missed for one reason or another. Now granted, in the past few years, we've had lots quarantined. So we we sort of take that with a little bit of grain of salt, but that's something we have to keep forever in our mind. And and we will ask Jeanette Johnson, our power school, be ready to run that report for the forty-five day, forty-five days. We have seventeen point one percent of students who are currently considered chronically absent. But that's four point five days. It's ten percent of the number of days that they've come. So currently, we've got seventeen percent of our kids that missed four and a half days of school for whatever reason. So that could be the flu, it could be for COVID, it could be any number of reasons. It could be they went to Disney World. I don't know that. We have expanded our focus on professional math, professional development and training. Next Monday will be the fourth day where we've had eighty of our teachers come meet with our department and the State Department. We've brought the State Department in for three consecutive days. It's hard to get eighty teachers out of our buildings at one time. But our principals have made that sacrifice and we brought them to WTC and we've met with them. And we'll continue to do that. We have, the seventh is our last day this semester and we will meet on the day in March with Dr. Tanny Palowski from the Center of Excellence at Francis Mary. Principals continue to have regular data huddles with our department and with Dr. Goodwin. We'll be at our next one, which is next Wednesday, after our, that's our meeting after the meeting. So we're we're holding them accountable as well. Academic plans have been submitted and approved by the State Department. I have a meeting with them. They have actually engaged an outside service to verify what's going on with our academic recovery plans and all of our literacy plans and other plans we've submitted. And I have a meeting with them next, tomorrow, actually. Our Human Resources Department, Mr. Hopkins and his department is doing a great job of hiring people, evens now as as people, as we fill the vacancies. And Mr. Carter talked about things that were reported but not part of the accountability system. We'll meet with you at another meeting to have further data debridement, understand the district demographics, there are federal grant funding, people-teacher ratios, people's empowerment, funds spent in the classroom, administrative costs and other things like that 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 you may have questions on, and we'll meet, and we'll do that at another meeting. So, my last slide.
Dan, I've got a question. Go on back to slide forty-two with the graduation rate. And this is looking at a different form of the test scores. I think Lee County was at the very bottom of every single grade level. How in the world do they have a ninety-two point three graduation rate?
Um, that's a great question. They they get them through the classes. For one way or another, that you you can fail and end of course exam and still pass the class, even though the end of course exams were twenty percent. Uh, even though the end of course exams were twenty percent of the grade, that's only four classes in the course of your high school career out of twenty-four. So they're finding ways to get their kids through and kudos for them for getting them across the state. But if you compare that to their college and career readiness numbers and you look at uh the ones that are ready for employment in uh, in the workforce are ready for college, they're normally very different. But kudos to them for getting them across the states, that's wonderful and they, they deserve praise for that. That's brand. If I could also mention with that, you can I'm not going to say artificially, because it is not artificial, but you can raise your graduation rate some points by doing a very, very thorough job of record keeping for four years and keeping up the cohort. Lee County is a, is a school district that does not have a lot of transient population. So their students come to them and they, they stay through the senior year, therefore it's easy to track them. And, and I'll, you know, we, we can talk about our high schools uh in detail at another time if you wish. But we have a lot of going and coming in our, in our three high schools. And so if that student comes in at ninth grade and we don't do a good job of following them, and they leave us in eleventh grade. If we can't document where they went, they don't count as a graduate. So they count as a dropout. So if you lose where the student went in the process. And what happens sometimes, especially during the COVID years, is that uh we, we, we took our eye off of that ball, making sure that as soon as the student leaves, we figure out where they went and document. And uh, so we're going to, to renew our focus on that, which will, and again, it's not artificially, it's actually making the data reflect what really happened.
Mr. Matt, do you have a question? Um, do we give out, do we have a survey go out in each school or um percent satisfied with the learning environment?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's on the report. Yeah, that's on, I'm sure of the call, that's it.
Did you choose to man?
No, sir.
Okay, why didn't we get that plus um the individual schools? Um, biology, US history, Constitution and so forth, uh, where they rank as far as each individual schools. Uh, specifically the high school.
We'll be happy to provide it, I've never provided that before in the past, but I'll be happy to get that to everybody.
Information.
Yes, sir.
I thought, name for each school ranks, and can you tell me last question, or can somebody tell me how many teachers we have in each school? I don't know. I know there's not too many, that's the least, and then can, we will have the most, that would, that.
We, that's actually, that is, it's only a report card as it's reported, but not, you know, an indicator, you know, not a It's not part of the
Can we get that?
Sure.
I would appreciate that information.
I have it for you tomorrow.
Thanks, sir.
Randy, just, uh, wanna piggyback on the top ten district rankings, uh, because it was out last year, uh, in presentations that, you know, it, it was mentioned, hey, we need to sit down with other districts and talk about what we're doing. Uh, successfully, just help me out here, has some of that work been done going to other districts and sitting down, seeing the, the good, the bad, the ugly? What can we do? And then I'll piggyback and go one step further is, I, I'm nervous about waiting too long to have results. You know, to go, are we improving? So how can we, how can we make sure we're on par to keep up with some of these districts? Going forward, whether it's benchmarking three months, six months, twelve months, two years, whatever, so that we, we know, hey, we're doing what we need to be doing versus what, what happened to it?
But fortunately, we have several people in our department who are connected throughout the state. So Ginger Kato is, who's our elementary director, uh, has worked at the state department level and has knows people all over the state. I've been around for a hundred years and I know people all over the state, so there's Dr. Thompson and, and Ms. Nipples. Uh, and, and your wife, Regina. Um, but we all participate at SCAS in roundtables. Whether for myself, at the instructional leaders roundtable, or the elementary directors roundtable, or the secondary director roundtable. At the testing and accountability roundtable, where we all go and meet once a month with these people. We, I have also spent time with these people from Lesson Two, Lesson One, uh, Lesson Five, Greenville. To learn what they are doing in their districts. Some of those things we can replicate, some of those things we can't due to financial restrictions that just aren't, aren't logistically possible for us. Uh, as far as kid, how do we have to wait? No, we map tests three times a year. Uh, we'll go over our winter map results when they come out, we did winter map in the end of January. And then we'll bring that to the board and that's a predictor of how we doing, how we are doing. We just got through with the first round of tutoring protocol. So we'll be gathering the results when they do the winter map, as it compares to the beginning of the year results to the middle of the year. We'll do it again, uh, from the middle of the years to the end of the year when we tutor again, uh, in February and March. We did that last year, uh, and the results were encouraging. And those, if you remember, uh, our tutoring protocol deals with our lowest level student in, in achievement. All our tier three kids, uh, and our tier three students on their uh end of the year map showed growth of double digits, which was encouraging. We need to be sure we carry that through to SC ready as well. Uh, but i- it's gonna be a process and it's gonna take some time, but I'm, I'm confident in some of the steps that we're taking now. Uh, with, especially with what we're doing in math, uh, that we're gonna see some, some pretty good growth moving forward.
Yeah, when you clarify what you said about the twenty percent of ELC in algebra, how does that twenty percent account? I thought you said something about
The, the state mandates that for your fourth ELC classes, which right now are Algebra One, English Two, US History and Biology. The, the state mandates that that count twenty percent of your final grade. Your first nine weeks grade applies, your second nine weeks applies, your exam grade, the blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Okay, but over the past couple of years with the twenty-twenty COVID year and the following year, twenty-one. They said because of COVID and because people were in and out of school, that, that didn't happen. You didn't have to do that. So our district and several other districts decided to hold students harmless. And by that, I meant they take the, they take the exam. If it helps their average, then we would count. If it hurt their average, then we would, the state gave us that flexibility. And that was the decision, we surveyed the high school principals and the middle school principals, because that also affects your Algebra One kids in middle school. And that was the, the way they wanted to roll it.
Post-COVID, it is
Post-COVID, it is, it is twenty percent of your final grade.
Thank, that's why I want to leave one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I could just make a couple of comments as we wrap up, because we are gonna bring you a good bit of the other data with this. Report card is data rich, there are a lot of things. What we've given you tonight are just the indicators that contribute to that final rating. But there are a lot of other ones that, that we need to be aware of. Some of those have to do with student teacher ratios in our schools, that does matter. Uh, some of those have to do with funding that makes its way to the classroom, which matter. Uh, also, uh, poverty index, which matters. We have a wide range of, of poverty in that schools within the county. And when you look at that, you see that without other interventions, the scores are gonna reflect the poverty. Unless you overcome those obstacles. Tammy Palowski, who's coming in the, in the spring, uh, certainly from the Center of Excellence at Francis Mary. Is an expert on overcoming the, the barriers of poverty. In, in an hour, she can, i- and, and I'll go to that session again, and I'll probably sit in twenty sessions of hers. Every time I go, I learn something else that we need to be aware of, with students' poverty, helping overcome those, those things. So we will be bringing you some of those other indicators. But you know, there are the simple things too, that we have to be careful that we work on, we talk about student attendance. The students have to be in class for us to teach, so we've gotta do everything we can to do that. The teachers have been classrooms in order to teach the student. So we have to do everything we can to encourage teachers to be here today and to make the workplace appropriate. The other thing that we need to make sure of is, and we've been making sure, especially with math, with the math work we're doing. Is that the standards are the driving force, not the favorite topic that I had to teach. And I used to always like, when I was in schools, therefore I teach it, and I teach a lot of it. But then if that's only a small tested standard, we need to move on from that. So standards have to be the driving force. And then finally, and we've mentioned our graduation rate, but on all of these things, the record keeping has to be absolutely impeccable. You have a student who comes to us from homeschool, from private school during their high school career. We've got to know where they were and what end of course test they took, which ones they didn't. Therefore, we, we have to do the waivers, because if they took Algebra One at a private school, they didn't take the ELC. But if we don't get them waivered out, then all of a sudden they factor in a zero for that student. So that impacts what it looks like on the report card. So we will be doing a lot to, to really focus on making sure that what we do every day aligns with what the instructional outcome needs to be. And so, uh, we're, we're there. Uh, Mr. McDonald, I do appreciate the question about benchmark, because it's no good to do an autopsy at the end of the year. We need to take the vital signs during the year, using things like math testing, make sure we know what the vital signs are during the year. We don't need to wait on the patient to pass away and then go, they passed away. So, uh, we, we, you know, certainly will be focusing on that. Just sure, I think that concludes my remarks of that.
Okay. I'm telling you, I do have one, uh, did wanna say, uh, happy birthday to Mark. Being here with us this evening on your birthday. You could have been calling to abandon your love, but then this shit is not a good one. And with this big sacrifice for all of you, it's a personal challenge, as well as, we wish you guys a home.
Thank you. Uh, the last thing, uh, just would point out that, uh, out of my office yesterday, you sent a memo about a TAN, a tax anticipation note. That it's not for any kind of action tonight, but we'll be at the next meeting. Just wanted to draw your attention to that and make sure if you had any questions, please give me a call. Be happy to talk you through some of that used to be jargon, I know, but I'd be happy to try to put it in this regular language, if you need it to.
Thank you. It was a motion to go to exactly setting to the status resignation in time, so that's why I posted that. The longer sort of time class, I personally, seven ten, transfer of certified test.
Amen.
Properly motion by Mr. Red, second by Mr. McDonald. All those in favor, let it go by S and R.
Uh.
And all. We've been being open session.
Okay, well, actually.
Probably most of our listeners, our second bound is fair, all those who prepared, let me know by center.
Aye.
Because they are motion to accept the administrative recognition, excuse me, scratch there. And as I just said, with the stuff, it doesn't make an entire, I'm a certified classified, wasn't it? Form of certified classified, wasn't it? A sign of changes and transfer of certified classified, wasn't it? Because they are mostly accept administrative recognition, so important matters with the acceptance of employee A and B.
So, sir.
Probably mostly by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Sir, in the session. Here in the hall in favor, let me know by center.
Aye.
Those are post, that's analysis. Are they in the motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I hereby move that we both send a formal complaint to the State Department of Education, requesting that appropriate action be taken against employees A and B, professional employees of Port County School District, in pursuit of the South Carolina Code, annotated section 59, 25, 530, breach their employment contracts with the district and fail to report to work.
The motion is properly before us, is that second. The proper motion by this, the second by this person, in discussion. Here in the hall, most in favor, let me know by, basically, I think. That's everyone. But they are mostly their jury called surprise.
Thank you.
Probably most of our listeners, for the second line, post flagrant, all in favor, let me know by center.
Aye.
The second.
For the Father, we thank you for biding us this evening and our school board meeting. Lord, we took care of the business that was at hand in a concise way, Lord, and in a just way. May we leave here this evening, Lord, but know from your divine presence. We ask that you guide us safely back home and find all this well when we reach our destination. And we give you all the honor and glory that is due you, and in your name we pray. Amen.